We're going to go right into opening the assessors meeting.
Okay, in front of you, you have the agenda. There are eight abatements. All right, I got to count right. There are eight of them. Um, we've kind of pre-revealed it, but the, um, there are several buildings on here that have been demolished, a couple land over assessed. Uh, the one that says billing error, that's actually, it's an error that she passed and the bill went to her estate. But they, uh, the children who own this land, they wanted separate billing, their tenants in common. And, and so they called and, and so, you know, the, the abatements are on this page, but then the supplements are on the supplemental list. They each got half or actually it was three, three heirs for a property. So each got thirty-three percent of each of these. And two of them, uh, the sister and brother, I guess, or I don't know, ground area, I guess, uh, each got thirty-three percent. So that was a net, you know, wash. Um, let's see. Any questions on those?
No.
Uh, the one, uh, account eleven thirty, that's, that's the one across the street here that's getting knocked down and rebuilt.
It's been knocked down, right?
Yes. And that's, that's a pro rata share. They, they tax up to this point, but...
This is the house that was demolished?
Yes.
That, you know, okay, it's going to put, go a garage or something?
Well, now they're going to go rebuild a house and they bought the adjoining lot also. They had nothing on it. But anyway, they're going to put a, a garage on that and, you know, the house. They're restructuring.
Okay.
The lot. We're seeing that happen here. This is a trend. Buy your property, blow your house away, build a new house, you know?
Happens.
Anyway, the supplements are seven. And you can see the totals between seven thousand three hundred twenty-three dollars and eighty cents. We got back five thousand eighty-three ninety-five. There will be some additional supplements later on this, this year. So things should stay pretty even in that regard. And then there's one abatement for a house that, uh, is uninhabitable, has no value, and is dilapidated and used.
This was not a property abatement?
No, it's not. This is, this is in the three-year time zone.
Lack of use abatement, yeah.
Right. Okay.
Lack.
Any, any, any questions?
No. No question.
Okay. All right, that concludes that portion. The second item for discussion is the rules for open space classified land use.
Jim, do you want me to make a motion and have it signed?
Sure.
You want to wait till the end?
Whatever you want to do.
We'll just want to quickly sign these and you can start.
You'll have to, you'll have to close me and reopen.
Why? Oh, this, we can't sign? I thought we could sign with any assessor meeting.
No, no.
We changed it enough.
Okay, let's finish the assessors meeting.
Well, that's what I, that's what this was, I thought that's what this was, the abatements, so what we were just talking about. So they don't get signed in the assessors meeting?
Well, you'll, the, the board, the board can't, the board of assessors...
Are we not a board of assessors?
You can't sign those.
As a board of assessors, that's what I thought. My question was, we've got a bunch of paperwork here to sign on what you just talked about. Do we want to sign it now?
Oh, sure. I don't care about that.
So I'm going to make the motion to sign it.
I, I, so move.
Sign the abatement.
Yes.
I know the prior administration used to close out the board of assessors meeting.
And then, and then...
And have the board select.
Why? Because we are board of assessors, right?
Yeah, you are the assessors.
So it shouldn't be done in this meeting?
I'm just your, I'm just your helper.
You're the agent, there's all the work.
It's nice to multitask.
I think it should probably be done at the assessors meeting.
To multitask.
So do second, do last?
Yeah.
Move to accept and...
Oh, Jason did?
It doesn't matter who, right anybody's...
And I can talk a little bit about open space.
We probably can since we're just signing...
I'd like to listen to that.
What? All in favor? All right, you and I.
And that was for the abatement?
It's not for the supplement. We didn't do the supplement on this. It's separate. But then, unless it's considered an abatement.
Uh-huh.
And a supplement is different than an abatement, isn't it?
Yes, it is.
That's why you have to do a different motion.
This is to document that you sign a warrant for...
The collect money, so we have to sign two, right?
And then this, this gets appended to that and goes in a commutator.
Oh, got it. One is for the actual amount and one is to allow the tax collector to collect the money, right?
Yeah. Right.
Can it all be done in one motion?
Yeah, I think we can do that. Who wants to make that motion?
I will.
Okay. I'll, I'll raise it.
I'll make that motion.
I guess, I guess, we're making a motion to, we're making a motion to sign the supplemental tax certificate in the amount of five thousand eighty-three ninety-five and also to allow the tax assessor to, uh, I'm sorry, the tax collector to collect that fund. So supplemental tax certificate and a supplemental tax warrant.
So move.
So that was the second. All in favor?
No. That was the motion.
Oh, I said the motion, but she said...
I said, I said, I'm not saying the motion yet.
Yeah.
So move.
There we go.
It's not supposed to snow tonight, is it?
No.
Not supposed to rock?
No.
No, but the roads are slippery like they were this morning, so be very careful.
Yeah, they are.
Is it going to go below thirty-two?
It, it was, yeah, it doesn't matter, the ground's frozen.
You go home close to the water, so it's...
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
The ground is frozen.
It's slippery. Yeah.
Think about so...
It's better if it weren't if you had blew that.
Yeah, what happens is they get lulled by, because their dash, the monitors has thirty-seven degrees, but they don't realize the ground's still sitting at forty.
Frozen from, yeah.
And it freezes the rain, even though they throw salt and sand on it. Well, they don't use much salt anymore, it's the problem. And, uh, you know...
I don't care. All my leaves have been dug up. That's all I care about.
Is that all of them?
Yes.
All of them.
I think there's a lot more.
It's time to roll, we're the best.
We're missing like seven more of them.
Where are they?
I did not.
No, she hasn't.
Oh, you already handed them back, right?
No, we have three pages, three pieces of paper there.
Yeah. Oh, you have, we have them now. There you go.
Okay, we done with that page?
I think so.
Okay, let's move on to number two. Uh, some of you have questions and I'm sure I do have questions about it. But, rules for open space classified land use. If someone wants to put their land in open space, all they have to do is walk in, fill in the state mandated statutory application submitted to the board of assessors through me. And unless there's some technical issue with the application itself, and by technical I mean they've got a clerical error, ministerial error, not enough acreage, you know, the facts about the land or, you know, its composition, whatever, not right. It, it, the law says that they submit it by April first. I then, you then, we then have until June first to approve or disapprove the application. Ninety-nine point nine percent of the time, we're going to approve the application because the law says we have to unless we find that the application has an error in it, some sort of administrative error. If the land is, um, theirs, then they give approval. There's no way to say no to this unless, and it's my understanding, unless that application exceeds three percent of the dent state of Maine valuation for the town. If that land, if that land is valued, let's say, the state of Maine's valuation right now for this town is about a hundred seventy million dollars. And for some strange reason, Lebat is the second highest valued, valued town in Washington County. I mean, we're behind Eastport, we're behind, I think Dalyville's the only town that has carried more valuation.
Are we done?
But not, not the town south of us, value higher than Lebat.
We have more waterfront, is that it?
Yeah.
We've got eighty-six miles of it.
Aren't we lucky?
More or less, I'm sure. So, that said, if, for example, if we're a hundred seventy million, three times, three percent, three, three times seventy million, so they would have to walk in and have a piece of land worth five million dollars. And even then, we would be required, we could say, no, we're not going to prove this out of hand. We're going to have a town meeting and let the citizens vote on it. But that's the only case where we have the right, or the citizens have the right to, to, to ask, you know, what's in it for us. If it's not three percent or greater than the state valuation of one deal...
It has to be just one deal. It can't be one particular...
It can't be a cumulative deal.
That's, see, that's, that's where we get in trouble. That's where we get in trouble.
And nobody, no single person, the way the law is written, no single person, and I'm, I'm going to check into this because I think there's a new twist on it. I picked up on it when I was reading the, the rules for converting tree growth parcels into open space as far as the lands. And there's this little statement in there, and I don't recall ever seeing it anywhere, that no single person may have more than fifteen thousand acres in open space in the state of Maine. And the last I checked, a person is a corporation legally.
Seriously?
Well, if you have an EIN, that looks like a social security number in a corporation.
They're a corporation.
It's meant to be considered as an individual.
And it's, that's stated in the, in the statute. I read it, and I'm like, when did that wind up in the statute? So I'll be checking into that.
Yes, I'll be checking into that.
Because fifteen thousand acres...
That does sound like a lot of acres for a whole state holding, doesn't it?
No, it doesn't.
No. Well, only person and corporation's got to be different.
Maybe that's why we see all these baseball cards getting traded around, you know? You know, I'm worried about that.
Yes.
Okay. In any event, classification application is filed with the office of the assessor not later than April first. The degree and duration of the classification is at the sole discretion of the landowner. The office of assessor has until June first to approve or disapprove the application. For guidance, see Maine Revenue Services Taxable in twenty-one. That provides all the guidance that, you know, one needs.
My understanding is you can take, get them anywhere from twenty percent to ninety percent off the taxable depending on the classifications?
Right. The range of the tax reduction exemption is twenty percent to ninety-five percent.
Twenty to ninety-five.
So if they walk in and say, I want to put my, like, like I have land, I own about three acres, three and a half acres, I can put it in open space. I can define a, an area around my house and the rest of it I could put in open space. And I could get twenty percent off. And I, and as long as, and all I'm doing is I'm promising never to develop that, that property around my current house and lot.
But you're promising access.
No.
Well, that's an easement.
No, in other words, if I, if I put my house in open space, common open space, my property, not my house, but my property, I could, I could have a survey done and, or I can define an area around my house, one acre, and the rest, I could put it in open space and get twenty percent off. I do not have to allow public access. I don't have to...
I thought that was one of the stipulations.
No, not for common ordinary space.
Is there a minimum amount?
There is for tree growth.
There's another one where you get ninety-five percent off.
Now, if I start, if I start, if I start giving folks...
That's when you have to...
Or if I put a hard conservation easement on it, or, or perpetual conservation easement on it...
That's when you allow access.
That's when I can get just the ninety-five percent off because that, that's deeded conservation.
But to, to, to just get your plain twenty percent off, you put it, you can just put it in faith?
Yeah, and if I ever withdraw, it's like tree growth, there is, there will be a withdrawal penalty associated with that. But I, I can never use it for anything other than...
Who sits in a dumpster and dreams up this stuff?
I have no idea, but it, but it's generally people who, well...
Do they know that it's hurting the people, little people?
Sure they do. They've been told repeatedly over the last ten, fifteen years.
This is going to be the major topic on Monday.
By all the towns.
It really is a pet peeve.
Mine too, John.
You know?
See people trying to survive and this goes on.
Well, you know, if your, if your, if your primary economic engine is primary, is prime situated shorefront property, you know, then...
You choose where you want to live.
Right.
Whether you pay ten thousand for it or one million for it.
Right.
You choose where you want to live.
Yeah.
I don't think that should have to penalize someone who lives in a, and I'm not saying poor, well, I will say poor, a poorer person.
Yeah.
I don't think you should have to penalize that person for where you choose to live and how much you choose to pay for it.
I know. I agree with it, but I'm just explaining the rules.
I know, Dan. And I think they suck.
That's why you can't afford to...
Well, it's too bad.
But, uh, anyway, those are the rules. We have no hand in setting these rules. These rules are set by the Legislative Tax Committee under influence of lobbyists and special interests. And the public sector entities in this state and around the country have a very, very strong interest in, in assembling parcels of land that are going to protect the environment and make room for, um, non-development of a certain economy.
Well, basically what happens is the owners own this land that's been handed down through generations, and they can't afford to keep it anymore because of this stuff.
That's why they're selling it.
And if other people aren't paying taxes, our taxes all go up and we squeeze out the people that can't afford it. That's not right.
Well, it's like anything, you know, these, these lands are protected under contract. There are contracts between the state and the landowners and, and the interests who want to set them aside. And we all know, the only reason you write the contract is so you have a legal way to break it at some point in time, all right? So at some point in time down the road, it's very likely that these holdings will change and can be modified. But the thing is, is, and I want to add, this is not parkland, all right? Parkland is not tax exempt, and I want to make that clear. The park that's being, um, that, that has been established here is not tax exempt. It's being fully assessed by, by me. And it, you know, its valuation this year is about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars and it's being, the mill rate's being applied to that. The owner there is going to pay about seven thousand dollars in tax on that park this year. And when he finishes that new building out there, he'll be paying about what it was being assessed for and paid for against, uh, when the prior owner owned it.
So even a nonprofit doesn't have to pay, so that's fully being taxed part?
Yeah. Now, a portion of it, a portion of it, the island, you know, they're down there and there's an island there, that was put in open space and the shorefront associated with that island. But that, you know, that's not part of the park. They did not incorporate that into the footprint of the park.
But it will be.
No, people, it is, technically it's a separate piece of land in that there's water between it and...
It's a little bit of water.
You know, but it's, it's under one deed. But that has, that is not part of the park. People are not going to be allowed to just go over there and access that. And it's in, it's in ordinary open space.
You're still getting somewhat of a tax break, right?
Twenty percent.
And the park's getting done at all?
No.
Just being unkind, I mean, it's not open to people to go there.
Well, it...
So they'll be taxed on that?
If the owner wants to give folks the right to go there, right? Because it's basically going to remain an unencumbered, kind of open space area. Like, you know, if the owner, if the park wants to let people go on to it, fine.
Yeah.
That's up to them, not, you know...
Is it worth a wildland habitat or anything like that?
I, I don't know. I'm not a, you know, I'm not a scientist or a biologist or whatever. I mean, I'm, it's not...
Well, it's worth exploring, I think.
The park is, the, the park, the park itself is a developed, it, it has roadways, it has access, it has...
Trails.
Areas, trails, it's being, it's being managed and groomed for public use on a, on a recurring, you know, steady basis for different, for different things. Now, that the island park that they put into open space, I, I don't know what their plans are for that, it's just open space, but they're not building trails on it as far as I know.
What percent is that? Is it, what percent?
I don't know what I'm talking about. It's not great, it's, um, I think it's like four, I'm trying to remember the acreage or whatever.
Oh, twenty percent.
What's that, twenty percent?
It's as big as Rogers Island, which is, you know, now...
Oh, the old campground? I think Jack said it was ten acres.
Yeah, yeah, it's not huge, it's not like forty or fifty acres.
I think Jack said it was small.
It could, it's not wide enough to build a house on.
Good.
There's no setback, you know? You could go two hundred fifty feet that way and two hundred fifty feet this way and kind of run out of real flexibility over there. And it's got bird nesting stuff around it and all that stuff.
Yeah, I, I would think that that, if that's there, it would be worth protecting.
Yeah, yeah. Any, any other questions?
Just saying the same thing. Jason, do you have your question answered?
Yeah.
So we will, is there no further questions?
Yeah.
We will close the assessor meeting?
Well, one last thought. I, I do know that there are, I don't know, there's interest afoot amongst the other towns to begin to work together. I don't know the extent to where to tap, you know, on this, this issue and on the floodplain issue. There's some towns that are going to really be, you know, latched by the floodplain. And that's, the floodplain ordinance is going to, I know one town, I won't say who at this point, but, but they believe, um, they're, they're in the throes of trying to get a shoreline zoning ordinance approved by the townspeople. And now that they understand the impact of the floodplain ordinance, the new, the new, and what the new FEMA studies are going to do to heretofore developable lands that will not be developable, at least not the way they, in other words, you know, if I'm assessing a piece of land and it's shorefront, and let's say it assesses for fifty thousand dollars, and if, if, if that land suddenly becomes unbuildable because of the floodplain ordinance, that assessment's coming off in the books. And if it, and, and so the impact is anywhere from completely off the books to, well, you can still build on it, but you've got to build on a little tiny part of it that's way to hay back here where you can't even see the water. And that will, that will...
Yeah.
Will have, well, the, the outcome there is I would have to lower the assessment. So what we'll probably see in that town is a dramatic drop in their shorefront valuations.
I guess my question is, James, which will cause havoc? A couple meetings ago, we were discussing the differences in tax rates...
Yeah, yeah.
Between the groups. Now, some are paying five percent, some are paying fifty percent evaluation, some are conservancy. And why wouldn't they all be at the fifty percent?
Because that's not...
Seven, five, and the, I mean, who regulates that?
It, it's regulated by them. It's your choice. If you're a landowner and you want to put your land in open space, if you want to, and it's, and it's part of your plan for the land, uh, to just, um, put it in open space in perpetuity and not ever develop it because you just like that idea, you can implement that idea. You can, you can drive the valuation by me down to five percent.
There's different categories.
But if you want to put a good hunk of it in open space, yet leave a piece out to be developed by you for your family, for, for a compound...
But as a town, the state doesn't give us a break, the same break. We pay full boat.
What do you mean?
Our taxes, county taxes and state taxes.
Oh, oh, yeah, yeah.
We pay full boat and all these breaks.
Yeah, you pay because they, you have to understand that the county tax is predicated on what the state says this town is worth.
Right.
And that's a rubber stamp.
Yes.
Okay, for the counties. They, they don't have to do any complicated math other than...
Give me, give me the money.
They, they, they see what the state says we're worth, hundred seventy million times three, whatever their, their, their mill rate for, that their budget is spread amongst different municipalities. And so if it's, their mill rate's going to be whatever, Lebat...
So it doesn't matter what we have in conservancy, we just pay the same?
They add it all up, they do the same thing.
I see what you're saying, though. It would be really a way, much more...
They're, the state would get hit too.
Well, if, if we paid, like, if, if we had a percentage, ten percent is in land trust, so we need to get, we only pay ninety percent.
Right.
And somebody else has five percent, they pay ninety-five percent, and someone has twenty percent. I think that makes a lot of sense. Did you want to go to Acosta and pitch that?
I know, I know, I know a fellow from Wayne that did it to the governor, and it didn't go over very badly.
All right.
Yeah, well, you know, they...
But it makes a lot of sense.
Because he said the same thing. It's killing Wayne.
It's, it's...
It's killing all the towns, it's killing all the folks.
You know, we don't mind giving you this forever wild land, but we need to be compensated and there needs to be spread across an area of people that can afford it all together because they all, they all benefit from it.
I mean, if somebody came to me right now and said, hey, you're going to pay fifty percent of your taxes, I'd be crying.
Right.
Five percent, that's crazy. Yeah, anyway.
Well, thank you. We, you know, I, it's really great, and if we could just come every so often and, and give us another lesson. We really don't understand. I don't, I personally haven't learned enough. I would like to learn even more.
There's so many out there.
And I think that we need to be more educated on it.
Well, it is, you know, they...
Not much we can do, but if we could band together with other towns, it would be helpful.
Well, I know that, I know the other town was talking about doing this because when they look at the impact of all of it, you know, the tree growth thing, I mean, the... you know, the tree growth thing, I mean, the open space thing, the floodplain thing, all these, these, these rules that- And, and, you know, I mean, the, the floodplain ordinance is designed to protect people from themselves and to mitigate the losses of the insurance companies, you know, that are, I mean, they're getting plundered.
Yeah.
And, uh-
Because they don't make their money.
Huh?
Because they don't make their money.
What are you doing? They're going to make their money. So anyway.
All right.
And that's it. Any other?
Any questions?
No.
Thank you, Jason.
Thank you very much. Be careful driving.
I will be.
Yes.
Thank you.
Put that orange hat on.
Well, that, you know, if I go off into the snow, then it's fine.
We'll see ya.
All right.
We don't need a motion.
Thank you, dear.
We need a motion. Okay, so we need a motion to close the assessment.
Make that motion.
Hey, how you doing?
Second.
Good.
All in favor? We don't need a meeting to open the floodplain. So we're not, we're going to open a select board meeting now, glad.
We have no such thing anymore?
No, second pledge, we can sing an animal anthem if you want.
No. It takes a long time.
Yeah. All in favor?
While you guys are signing, I'd like to mention something. We've been having technical difficulties with our live stream the past, forever, I think. The, the system we were using changed it so that it's no longer free, you have to pay seventy dollars a month. And of course, we haven't budgeted for that, so I looked for another avenue. I've been trying YouTube Live. It works during the day, but for some reason, when I bring it out here and try it at night, it's not working. I don't know if it's because of the way from the router, or if it's because there's multiple home at night browsing, and our bandwidth slows down. But I'd like to, with your blessing, I'm going to try Facebook Live. I haven't tried that yet. Just go on the town's Facebook and go Facebook Live, and that's what we'll try next.
Is that true?
That works, sure. It is being recorded, though, and it will be uploaded the next day onto the website. It's just not, they're not getting the live stream. And it is still being broadcasted on cable, it's not on a computer.
Okay. And so, any, any other motions to accept the minutes as written on the number fourteen?
Yes, I, I agree, accept the minutes of November the eighth. Second.
All in favor? Old business code enforcement?
Yeah. Um, I don't know if it was the last meeting or the meeting before, but we were talking about, the board had made a request that people notify the code enforcement officer when they demolish a building. And I followed up on that with MMA, and they said the only way that you guys could do that is if it's in the ordinance. So I'm just letting you know that the ordinance has to change.
Is that a bit of a blocking the building ordinance?
No, it's in the billing notification, you could change the billing notification ordinance for that, so, you know, the update that I found out.
And we all know how we have to change an ordinance.
Yes.
Public hearing, special town meeting, if you want to do it, you want to do it on the annual meeting where it's all done at once.
Right.
So if that's something you think you want to do, then we should, we should do it and, and put it on the-
Yeah, it'll be so, or, or, yeah.
So, Jason-
Do you want to let things build up, because there could be other things that might be needed for a special town meeting?
Yes.
Have that, like, then you could blow that.
Yes.
Then have everything all together.
Yes.
Well, there probably will have to be, we probably are going to have to have another special town meeting at some point.
Gary had a real good start on it.
Yep.
On everything, he's got a real good handle on it.
Gary, oh, Gary does?
Yeah. Doing fantastic.
You could ask, as a courtesy, you know, people could.
Well, it's not really that. If you're going to tear a house down, you want to notify the towns, it comes off the top.
Exactly. That's another reason.
Well, it's an incentive to do it. Right, don't do it, right?
Right.
But what about them having to be, going on the taxes? That was only a rule for, for the fire department to burn it down, right? If they, they would, they would begin, issue the burn permit by the fire department if they didn't have, if their taxes weren't paid. Which was an incentive to have their taxes paid off.
Right.
Then they would, of course, then it goes off the tax roll, but still, yeah. All right. Any other questions on that? So, new business, main DOT road closure made, bridge local road use agreement. I think they want us to agree to do the detour for seven days rather than take three months. Was that the estimate last time?
I think it was-
Do you have the agreement?
Yes, there's two problems.
Yeah.
I guess one for us and one for them. So there's one there.
Got it, so we'll do two original.
These three ladies, I'm, I'm sure, are here for this reason. Because they're in trouble.
Exactly. About the detour?
Can we, yes. Can we share a copy, is there a copy of the-
Well, it's a pretty long contractual copy, there's a picture.
It's a contractual thing.
My understanding is it's going to last seven days, it's going to go down, Crozneck, and then left, you know, go petting which place, and then use Timber Cove Road and out, but I don't think it's going to be more, was it not seven days, I'm right?
Yes.
Seven days, yeah.
I was standing, oh my golly, terrible detour, detour, but that doesn't seem like it.
It's just quick and it's uncomfortable.
It's seven days.
Except doing it the alternate way would mean to narrow the road down to one, one-
Build a whole bridge.
Yeah, and, and it would slow for weeks on end, so.
I think we all agree with that, no problem. The issue is how can safety be maintained during that time? Because it's a really dangerous road for that kind of town.
You, are, are you requesting signs or something?
They'll be signed. It's that corner that's a problem, really, there's an order there.
Who's, who will, if you're signing this, is somebody from the, the unorganized territory also signing?
They've already signed, and they approved it. Yes, I got that in an email from Michael White, that Dean Preston had approved it, and he sent me a copy of it.
Oh, okay.
And so, Joanne, at the meeting, I believe, you suggested this happen in September, after the tour season.
I brought that up, that why can't we do it in September?
Yep.
He mentioned that, the school, he had been to, the principal and Mr. Johnson, the superintendent, and, and they felt that, um-
It was doable.
It was undoable, but then they went back to them.
It's doable.
It's doable. It is doable, yes.
And the date would be September, that he has pitched us, would be September third through the twenty-sixth.
Is that later than?
Yeah.
What is that? Now, one of them later.
September third through the twenty-sixth.
That would be of two thousand and eighteen, right? The day after, like, the weekend.
And he said that that's not even a solid, that it's up to the contractor.
Yes.
So the other dates are July eight through July twenty-eight, or August twelfth through August twenty-eighth.
Well, I think we as the town should pick a date. I, I don't think it's up to the contract. I believe that we need to tell that.
Well, the upper's going to have to say we approve subject two, you didn't have to put it in, you have to put it in-
Intentional Hamburg.
Intention on a particular date.
He's given me his cell phone number if you guys want to talk to him this evening. Do you have any questions that you can call him?
The people that were there the other night, there were two business owners in the crowd. Yeah, there was only eight of us. And, you know, they felt that, you know, July and August are their, you know, prime seasons. You know, I don't want to take away from anybody's business, and if we can do it with the school being all, all set with it, I think there's only one family, but they can come in around, will cause sediment and drop them right off because they're right there. Do they have an, the hours that they start and the hours that they close? Yep.
Okay, this is simple, if you would like, I'll read it, it's very short. Town of Lubeck shall, they agree to let main DOT use the Crow Neck Road as a detour during construction to replace the maze bridge number twenty-five, twenty-seven in the summer of two thousand and nineteen. Main DOT anticipates the traffic will be detoured from Route one eighty-nine onto the Crow Neck Road for seven consecutive calendar days. The actual, I don't know why they don't say Timber Cove Road, because they, because what are they going to do? Go down into the water at the end? The actual duration of the detour may vary depending upon conditions encountered during construction, including weather events. It looks to me like they really want to get it done in seven consecutive days, but if they have three days of rain, it's probably may take ten. I'm not, what, okay, so here's B. Agree to let main DOT temporarily widen the following intersections to better accommodate the turning movements of large trucks while the detour is active. One, the intersection of Route one eighty-nine and Crow Neck Road northeast corner. And two, the intersection of Crow Neck Road and Timber Cove Road southwest corner. That's a terrible one, right now, there's a big eye hole in there, I would get stuck in.
Okay, I was at, I am right.
Yes, go ahead.
I was at the meeting. And the discussion was to reroute the, by weight, trucks over onto one ninety-one. So we're not even supposed to have any trucks on our, down our road.
What if they're under a certain weight, the bigger ones might get through?
Well, it's not in here.
I don't know if it was in-
They, they don't even mention another detour.
Yeah, there's that, like-
Are they done with?
Yeah, it sounds, that's not even a choice.
Main DOT will widen intersections to the maximum descent within the existing right-of-way limits by widening the shoulders with a paved surface. The widened shoulders will be removed once the construction is completed. Then it says, main DOT shall agree to repair any damage to Crow Neck Road due to its use as a detour route for the maze bridge project. All repair costs will be responsible, the responsibility of the main DOT. Crow Neck Road will be, first of all, they've got a crow neck and then crow's neck, and they don't have Timber Cove Road that they will repair. So I, I would say personally, well, that's, of course, that's, that's a trespass, right? All of Timber Cove Road is trespassing in there. So you're going to have, you'd have to go to the, the unincorporated territories, and look, but they've already agreed.
These are some.
Was it not mailed, you were all mailed?
No, not seen.
You never got anything in the mail? I, I know that we did, I know that last week.
Do you want me to try to call them, so they get clarification on the detour?
Yeah, go ahead. But if it's questions on people who trust it, that's-
Well, it would be interesting to know if they're going to reach the big truck, or-
I don't think you'd get a trailer truck down those, that road very easy.
Down.
To the cold.
It was already, it was disgusting. I, I thought it was all set in stone that, that they were going to reroute down to one ninety-one.
Mike, this is Renee Gray, the town administrator of Lubeck. I'm going to put you on speakerphone, okay?
Okay.
All right, the board has some questions for you.
Can I?
Mike, this is Joanne. And at that last meeting that we were at, I thought it was pretty much set in stone that we were going to reroute the larger trucks, the overweight trucks, down through Cutler. Down through one ninety-one.
Yes, that is correct, we're going to sign that route for first time this year.
Okay. Now, it doesn't say this in this contract.
It's not in the contract. It says you're diverting all traffic down Crow Neck Road. It mentions Timber Cove Road going one direction. Let's say a big truck is coming out of Lubeck, delivering to the IGA. How, who is going to tell them to turn down one ninety-one when they leave?
Yeah, yes.
Uh, we're going to have tons of signs, six message boards, and, uh, we're going to have a police officer there at least half a day for the entire length of the detour.
Because there is that wicked corner on Timber Cove Road that will cause some problems for a big guy. I, I don't see that happening too well. So they really need to be stopped, and-
Yes, uh, like, again, our, our plan is we're going to sign one ninety-one to Cutler for the trucks in the area. It will be signage, there's somebody signed as a separate truck route down one ninety-one. And we will have, uh, as soon as you walk, force presence there on the detour.
Okay, that's awesome.
I've got an officer there, officer there just about every day.
And now, also in this contract, it says that you will fix anything you might do to Crow Neck Road. You, you agree to repair any damage to that road. It doesn't say anything about Timber Cove Road. Is that on the unincorporated territories contract?
Yes, the remaining detour, detour, cover by the Washington County Agreement.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
The remaining detour, the detour, this model, back, that's covered with the Washington County, like, we're going to-
Oh, all right.
Yeah, it's just the same line, which, you know, we have a section of the road, we will-
All right, thank you.
Take care of them.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Um, you mentioned that you would have a police officer maybe half the death time. What kind of safety precautions, twenty-four seven, on this detour route?
Did you hear that?
I believe it was Wisconsin, Michigan, Wisconsin, that we're doing those detours, is that correct?
Yeah, twenty-four seven, during that time.
Uh, I mean, the biggest thing is we're bringing a slipknot, enter into putting a lot of signage up. Um, I've got a little list. Uh, we're going to be replacing all the stop signs on the detour route. Uh, we're putting stop and hit signs, there are going to be back row stop signs. Uh, on the stop signs themselves, we're going to put a, put a flashing amber light, so people won't miss the stop sign. Uh, we're going to be putting up on all this, the sand road, folks walking and biking, we're going to put a, share the road sign. Uh, on, uh, Sinaloa Road, right now, it's, there's no data stripe or anything. We're going to be putting down temporary payment markers, uh, in all the areas where visibility's tough, on hills, on curves. So we're going to be putting down a significant number of payment markers. And we're actually going to double them up, generally, we'll put down one in the middle of the road, and we'll be putting that too.
In the middle of the road? In the, marker in the middle of the road? Markers down the center of the road?
Yeah, we'll be putting markers down the middle of the road.
Those reflector type?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's, there are yellow ones that pick up a few inches, they're almost like their eyes.
How about rumble strips? You had mentioned those at the other meeting.
Yeah, we're doing two other strategies that have to slow folks down. Uh, we're going to be putting rumble strips in. We'll put in, uh, it's in two batches of rumble strips on the Timber Cove Road, one on each lane.
Wait, what, what, where?
Well, we're going to, we're going to have to leave it up to our president to put those in. Uh, well, well, what I was going to tell him is, you know, pick one of the straightest, straightest, and plant it right down the middle of that, probably. And, uh, we're also going to do the same thing, we'll put two pieces of rumble strips on the Crow Neck Road, one on each lane.
Just in one spot?
Excuse me?
How many spots?
How many spots?
Uh, each rump, each batch of rumble strips is packed with three, kind of mini speed box, so-
How many places along there?
She wasn't saying how many places.
How many places? Uh, probably a board of just five. Uh-
Has this been mapped out yet? Has it been mapped out with the locations and?
No, we haven't mapped out the exact locations, although we still possibility up to our contractor. And I'm writing the final language of that specification right now. Uh, what may, may actually do, I can't mention this as a formal public meeting, is we may actually place the rumble strips for the first three or four days in one place, and then move them to another place, so people won't get towed. So, or maybe, maybe yes, with the rumble strips being as long as five.
I like that idea. Yeah, that's a good idea. Mike, I have another question. Let's, let's hypothetically, a tractor trailer's coming from Callis, and they need to deliver something to the IGA in Lubeck. That technically means they have to go by one eighty-nine and drive all the way to East Machias and take one ninety-one to get here, correct? And what? So are there going to be, is there going to be proper signs at the end of one eighty-nine? Because I can see a few tractor trailers turning left and not even thinking until they get to a point where they may not even be able to turn around.
Yeah, we'll have signs, uh, on either side of Route one, where one eighty-nine comes in. We're going to, I think, three batches of signs where one ninety-one comes into Route one, East Machias. We're going to get all directions.
Are you putting this, any notification in the-
Are you putting this, any notification in the local papers? What have it done?
Uh, since I've seen the specifications, we actually try to put a notice out about 30 days before a project is done. It's been 10 days now.
Yeah, yeah.
So we'll, based on the contract, we'll put an ad in the local paper.
Do you wanna talk about the September deal?
Yeah. Mike, we, we talked about, this is Joanne again. We talked about that September timeframe. And we, we really feel that that is a stronger time, a more doable time for the town.
Okay.
You didn't sound too, you didn't sound too enthusiastic at here.
Well, it's always a trade-off. Yeah, I talked with Mr. Johnson at the data station director. He wasn't super enthusiastic, but he was okay with rerouting his buses in September. Uh, what initially told me, not very happy, but eventually came around a little bit.
Yeah.
Uh, the problem with the department is, it told me the trade-off. The board restricts the contractor generally the highest prices we get.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, contractor might get off one job in Washington County. Uh, you know, if he really tries and, uh, truly do the work in September, uh, generally end up getting higher prices. So it's now a trade-off for the department to make it away. Uh, because I get a... But, I mean, if this is a strong preference for you, I will talk to our staff and focus internally and see if they're okay with it.
Well, I don't know, this, only, we're missing one tonight. We were short. We, there's four of us here, and I know that I am all in favor of the September date. I don't think it's fair to the business owners that rely on tourism and rely on, you know, any type of business owner, actually.
That's past June, August.
July and August are, you know, busy months in town.
I, I'm a business owner as well, and I definitely, this is Carol Dennison, chair of the select board. I think September...
Hi, Carol?
Hi. September would be great. But, you know, I understand that you need to be able to coordinate with another project in Washington County around the same time. So hopefully, you can do your best. That's all we can ask for. And we really appreciate it. I know it's only gonna be seven days, right?
Uh, I hope it's seven days. It's being counted, and we're on track. I would think it's gonna be as long as 10 days or so. I'm really hoping, uh...
Seven to 10?
That's seven days.
Well, I know, seven to 10 days without pouring rain, whatever. I know it must be in September, Leslie.
Question about enforcement, as this is partially in Lubec and partially in Treskett. I'm wondering what kind of recourse or enforcement of this detour and things going on on either side of it. Who takes responsibility?
Well, uh, we're gonna have an actual big item in our project for law enforcement officers. And generally, what happens is, the contractor will coordinate with either the sheriff's office or the state police. Most of them will have jurisdictions in all the towns that are covered by the detour route. Uh, so jurisdiction generally isn't an issue. And, uh, they'll be able to enforce the detour route. Uh, my hope is that the first, first two days of the detour, the three law enforcement officers are gonna be, the people are gonna be making sure trucks go down the correct route.
Mm-hmm.
That'll be their primary job the first few days.
Mm-hmm.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah, when's it, when's it going out to bed?
When's it going out to bed?
When is it going out to bed? It's going out to bed on the third week in December.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, good. So thank you for your time.
When is the next meeting?
Well, thank you.
When is the next meeting?
Are you having another meeting shortly? Someone wanted to know when your next meeting was.
Uh, I think any major issues as a public meeting, I mean, I... Some smaller questions that I was gonna make, and once we finalize a specification package, I'm gonna send it to the town's chairman and town administrator down there. He guys distributed it.
All right, so it would be, as soon as we get your information, then we will contact you with when, when it's gonna be on our, our, our agenda. Thank you. Thank you very much, Mike.
Thank you so much, Mike.
Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Bye-bye.
Bye.
All right, we'll just, we'll sign this now?
Good, yes?
I'm still there, I have how much, I mean, who's gonna be moving the rumble strips? Who's gonna be doing enforcing? I can still, I can't think about that. Who's, you know, signage? People drive fast on their first already.
On, on the Timber Cove?
And Crow's Neck. And our straight stretches, along with bad hills and bad roads.
I would be on your side if it was a traffic deal.
Yeah, because it was last day of hunting.
Yeah, it was kinda, yeah.
Hunters. We have a, there are hunters, right?
There is one really bad hill that, he mentioned a resident? I didn't quite understand it. He was saying that they, I asked about the math, math, and he said, when they get their resident?
That's who runs the job for the state. He, they call him a resident. He is the overseer of the project.
So like lane or whatever?
Well, he will oversee.
Will he be the contractor or will he be working for the OT separately?
He represents the state.
Okay.
And what they, what they do is they make the contractor do what is in the contract. And if they say they have to move the rumble strips, he will make sure they move them. And that's his job, to make sure that they do everything they're supposed to.
And we don't know who that resident is.
No, they, they pick them up, the job is, you know, they'll award the resident.
And so the contractor is only obligated to do what's in the contract?
Oh, yeah, but they cover, I mean, the state covers it. I know, because I used to work on state jobs with a contractor. Yeah, the resident is the top guy, and any complaints go to him, and he takes care of it.
So that'll be who's in charge of enforcing the benefit?
Correct, everything.
And is the resident in residence during the time?
If any work that goes on, they have to be there.
Okay, good. So there'll be a local person there? Or somebody that will be local at the...
That was stay right here.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Just like on Route 1, they have a guy right in the trailer.
Yeah. That was sergeant, was it sergeant doing that? Yes, when I had a problem with something, I called them, and they fixed it. So... So, wanna make a motion to assign the contract?
I would say we assign the contract, yes.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? All right, so what's it gonna sign? That's my name. Oh, maybe it's underneath. Where do you put your name? I screwed up my signature now, but, okay, we have another one. We have another, another piece. So how do you want this done? You want it signed and then printed? Or is that?
It's signed right, yeah. You don't have to print it, because it's already typed in.
It's fine. It's typed in. I believe that's just the L signature page that I still, so...
Did anybody ever contact you before? The people in camp about us.
Well, look at what we went from, whiting all year. I mean, it's like all summer. People seem to find us.
I think we did talk about that on the first meeting.
Well, we talked about it at the meeting, Mike.
Is anything good going on with that?
Yes, I'm very excited about it.
Oh, I'm excited, too. Next is the LED lights from Amira, and Renee's got something happy to tell us.
Oh, yay!
Yes.
Give us happy, Renee.
Well, it's a constant question that we get every year at our town meetings. When are we ever gonna get our streetlights upgraded to LED?
Yeah.
Well, now, Amira is doing it for free.
Good.
Yes.
What are they doing? They're gonna put LEDs for free?
Yes.
Are they gonna be some pressure on us?
All right.
With your... Blessing, and I mean, I don't think we're...
Where do we have to sign?
Sign it.
Where do we sign?
We have to get on a list, and they suggested they do one or two at a time, and then we could see what they look like.
Yes.
Because there's a whole bunch of different choices. What we have right now is a 70-watt streetlight. And the equivalent that they would...
Is that on our packet?
Yes, in your packet. It's a 36-watt. And it's bright enough, it's a, it's a wider light. So I just was so excited.
Yeah.
And about half the power.
So the charge is cheap. So what are we paying right now? Oh, it's a little bit more.
We pay about almost $30,000 a year in electricity for our streetlights.
Yeah, so this says here, though, it's 843, and the cost is 790.
This is what we have here. Uh, no, the 70-watt streetlight.
So, oh, so it's going down?
Right.
It's going from 10, well, 8 cents. Per light, per lamp?
That's just the streetlights. We have some other lights around town, like our wastewater treatment plant has a bigger, like a 250-watt streetlight.
Yeah, well, that's going way down.
I think we wanna change everything that we can.
We wanted that from 100 to 250? You wanted that bright? I wouldn't wanna live near them.
We have 250s now, the treatment plant.
Well, that's different than Water Street.
The 70, that's what we have. I'm going to 36 would be all right. Yes.
Oh, may be going to 100, but not 250.
No, that's, this is old style. These are choices for old style, and this is the new style.
Oh, okay, this is 36.
Right, so if you have this...
Oh, if you either have 70 or 100, you go to 36. Oh, okay, sure. So that, it doesn't matter if you have a 70-watt or 100-watt, you're gonna get 36 watts.
Yeah, let's go for it.
So let's make a motion. So we'll make a motion that we want go with however many they can do at a time.
Yeah.
So our 71 or 100 goes to the 36. And I don't, if we already have a bright one down there by the sewer treatment plant, why don't we try to start changing them on Water Street?
Yeah, Water Street are different. Those are town, which I have contacted our local electrician to give us a...
Well, I don't mean they're close.
Are there others ones?
What section do you want them to start first? I mean, coming in from the, when you first get to like Kippies, that area there should be lit better. I'm just thinking, I don't know. I mean, we don't need them out of 189 changed quickly.
I think down there the school as well, because it, in the winter, it's darker.
Yes, they'll change every one. I mean... They said they'll only do a couple at a time. That's a good idea, though, to have them down there over, and have those over there by the basketball courts. I'd like to have them changed. Some of them don't even work. What are they gonna do about the lights that don't work?
Well, any lights that don't work need to be reported to me. And I call, I need a pole number and an intersection or wherever, whatever street they're on.
People call you and tell you all the time.
Yep, and I call them, and they fix them.
Every time it breaks, they should, anytime we have a lot, a lot, they should put this one, come down, fix it, and put one of these in.
Yeah.
Because then, like, they're killing two birds with one stone.
So the motion is to upgrade to LED streetlights?
Yeah.
And other lights.
Second?
Yeah, did you make the motion?
Yeah.
If you wanna?
Yeah, I'll make the motion if you like.
Is there a streetlight, I'm just trying to remember.
All in favor?
McFadden's, you know, on that corner.
It says not, there should be.
There should be.
I don't know. There must be a light there. He has his lights, but I've never gone there when it closes. Have you ever been by when they close? Are there lights there, Jason?
There's lights there.
Listen, I thought, all these years, I've been up there 27, 20 times a year, I was out there with one light. But it's not true. That tells you how...
Oh, there's three lights. Oh, now that you've counted, you're counting, you're counting lights now, right? It's amazing what you notice when you're on the other side.
While we're talking lights, let's talk about the basketball light. Do we want that going all year? Or is there a certain time that you want me to have them turn it off and then turn it back on? It's up to you.
Turn it off right now. Yeah, it's slippery down there. You don't wanna be responsible now. I think when, when the alternate parking, when you have no parking, when, when does that go into effect? I don't remember voting on that. Did we vote on that? We did? Why? Must have missed it.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't remember voting on it.
Well, I'll check if nothing...
I don't, do you remember voting on?
It's November 15th.
Shutting, I don't remember, unless it was the one meeting I'm at.
Okay, I'll check.
And so when we stop...
Do you wanna do it now? No other minutes?
I think you should do it at the same time, as you say, you cannot...
To April 15th.
Yes.
I make a motion that we have the no parking ban on the streets and have it...
Time street.
Light shut.
No parking.
When the parking goes into effect?
And also the lights.
And the lights.
Will turn off at the basketball.
I have a fact.
At the same time. Does that make sense, doesn't it?
To April 15th.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Where do we sign the tax abatement, sir?
No, that's a different one. This is a different one.
Another tax abatement?
This is from what you voted on in the meeting last week, this is paperwork to get.
Is that? From the, from Sally?
It was from her.
Then it's Sally, that boy, or who was, is that the pink one? We'll get that again. Sure we sent it out?
I think it's something different.
All right, make a motion that we sign these tax abatement forms that we had agreed on last week. There's three of them? Second?
No.
All in favor?
This is that email back from Helen on the beautification.
Oh, wait. Renee has, I don't know if she would manage to speak to all of you, but I did get a call saying that someone called, wanted to give us money to beautify Lubec. The beautification, right?
Marvelous.
Renee, the fund, the fund purpose, the fund, the purpose of this fund is basically anything that contributes to the beautification of Lubec. And I believe that this can be interpreted rather broadly. So I think improvement projects might also fall into this category. The donor hasn't given us any more, I have trouble with that word tonight, specific guidance. We will be presenting some ideas to them, hoping they will be interested in funding one or more. You are the only person we've reached out to at this point for ideas. So I know Renee mentioned the garden club.
The banners that are downtown, the Lubec banners, were bought by this person, this donor, years ago. And I know those need to be...
It's in the amount of five to $10,000 this morning.
I think I would go far to help the flowers and the, that thing, that would be great.
Well, I don't know if we did a whole, is there, load the banners, how much were the banners, you know?
I know, it's hard, because it was $200 if you ordered one. But if you ordered a bunch, you'll make the price go down, so...
So you would like to order the banners and have the garden club, how would that work? Would it go through us, or would you just give them, would have to go through us? So would you set up a, what, an account for the beautification of Lubec? And then the garden club would come and ask you for a certain amount, rather than handing you a check, send a whole check?
I think where it could help the garden club...
You like that idea, a perpetual fund?
They've, they've been having to hire in people to water, they're getting up there, and they're not able to do all that. So they water, they weed, but they're hiring, and a company do that, I think, is good. But it would only have to be, it could have, would have to be set up to be just as a back, because they also go on trips. So this shouldn't, these funds shouldn't go towards anything like that with the garden club.
Well, how about, use it like we normally do with grants. They submit an invoice, and if it's approved, then you pay it then.
Yeah.
Set up a...
So if they go and they spend $1,000 on flowers and containers or whatever, then...
Just bring it in an invoice.
What about the plaque down at Stockford?
I would love to have that part of it, too.
That would be good.
Really need to get this plaque put up.
We need some money for that.
That would be nice. I know that.
Make a picture of that plaque, and show if you're...
We were talking about getting someone to cut, you know, to get it placed on there. I believe the only person we could think of was somebody who'd be creative, so, because that's a...
I'm sure we can do it.
Unless somebody wrote in on the marsh field, proved it.
Yeah, you sure who'd do it?
The guy... Monument. Yeah, make some monuments.
We've tried two or three different charities to get someone to do it.
I know who'd do it. I know the man that, um, does the cemeteries.
So why don't you get an estimate, estimate of what that would cost, along with a, how much the replacing of the flags would cost, and then a certain amount for the, the garden club, and then, so that all three of them request us to one little bundle.
Actually, cutting the stone, I, I've seen them before where they've had rivets, put on all four corners, and then, and put into the, and put into the rock.
That's what we want.
So we can have it that, done that way? Looking simpler?
Yes.
And I think it looks better.
Yes.
Unfortunately, I need to get back to her tomorrow, because they're, yes, I could just list these things to her, I don't think they need a monetary amount, maybe.
Or say that's what we're spending it, they're gonna, like, it's really hard.
We'll take whatever we can get.
It's really hard to get an amount for a claim if you don't have a cost, you should.
It's more, it's not so much a grant as a donation, it's somebody that's, it's a benevolent person that's donating.
Yeah, but there are two, those areas where we are constantly in need, yeah.
But you can get the flag cost, and you can call up the, I mean, just a regular grave, gravestone that you have, on twenty-five hundred dollars, I happen to know. So, you could say twenty-five hundred for the stonework, um, whatever the flags are, and the remainder, five thousand, put in an account.
Like a mini budget?
Like a mini, a mini little benevolent, uh, separated just for the garden club, to beautify Lubeck. That's, and I break it down, I think it's better, you're getting more money back.
I just have a sick of another area for the.
And thank them very much.
Renee, for the lighting, is that, the Lost Fishermen's Memorial Park, I am, I've never been really happy with how that's lit at night. And I think that might need to be looked at.
Well, didn't we have a whole thing to do about that?
There was a, there was a little bit of controversy.
With the coal hills.
With coal hills.
And the light that was shining.
Nothing they, they weren't upset with any, but the light was shining in the windows of the, the, their tenants.
Did they move the pole?
I think they were supposed to have moved, I'm not sure if they did.
Oh, people would threaten to shoot right, like, in room nine, that one light that was the town light, they did not like that light. But you have to, it has to be lit, I mean, you just need room darkening shades, you need a light down there.
You do need some type of light.
Because they, the, we had a big discussion with the Lost Fisherman, asking to move the light, and had taken the light out so that the poor fisherman couldn't see coming up the boat lane.
Yeah.
So they're.
Yeah, it has to be a light.
There has to be a light.
Is there a light right now?
I, I'm not sure, I'm not sure, I'm not.
I'm gonna drive by and look.
Yeah.
I can't, I never hear, it's never dark by the time, I mean, I really, it's dark.
How's Doc at work?
Well, I think we had entertained at one time, like, solar powered lighting that was lower to the ground, I think that was just bandied about, and then it never went anywhere.
So we need to sign the two thousand seventeen audit town's understanding, what's that?
We got the audit back from our auditor, and she just wants, it doesn't have to be all of Slutman, it just has to be one.
But what about?
Wait, Gerald.
Do we have any problems?
No, there wasn't, there was a typo on the beginning of it, it said twenty-seven, uh, eighteen, it should have been twenty-eight, if I heard correctly, and Suzette caught it, and Mindy said just to track it out, put it, uh, to correct it.
Well, here's to the initials. Is this considered a contract or just an acceptance?
No, it's just a.
Except my question is, I haven't seen the audit. Did it come out already?
Yes.
I did, I wrote a motion to sign this, uh, provided I can look at the audit tomorrow.
This is just the town's understanding, Richard. You're not, you're not voting or signing to accept the audit, you're the town's understanding.
It's just a boilerplate, everybody has to do it.
Oh, before the audit gets done?
Nope, it's all done.
Okay, so what, so what they?
They usually make you sign this before they do the audit, but for some reason, they're having it done now.
Okay, I like that.
I have to sign all the time.
Alrighty.
Motion, you want to sign, based by?
Joanne?
Yep.
Who's second, Renee?
I'll, I'll second.
All in favor? I guess I'm done with all of the rest today. Eleven twenty-eight? Okay, there you go. Flashing before me.
No!
Did you vote?
Yes, all in favor.
I would not do that.
I think that, well, now, what is this?
Other business?
Other business? We don't have any more, right?
Yeah, I have some things, remember?
Two minutes, we're over time.
Suzette is working, had been working on, actually, we were approached by a vendor on our coffee release. Last year Suzette got a great negotiated price with the people that we've always used, and we've been approached by other people that want our business. This company is a Bangor, Maine, Philly, it's in Maine, and the other one that we're dealing with is a lot, we call it tech support, you go somewhere.
Yeah.
The technician for this company, it actually lives in Lubeck, John Burns.
Yep.
And, they've really, they're gonna pay seventy-five hundred dollars to get us out of our current lease.
Good.
They're gonna give us a scanner that'll enable us to scan voter registration cards, which we're currently not doing, because the scanner we had was made for XP computers, which we don't have, and then they weren't adaptable with Windows Seven. And so, there's another company that's also giving us another lease proposal, it's from Canon, we haven't got that back yet, but this guy was our guy, he's gonna save us two hundred and forty-seven dollars a year.
What's that name of that company?
Bangor Computer Coffee, and it's through Kairosira.
I mean, we have Mr. Burns' idea.
Well, I, I definitely mean, that we should go with that, if it saves us money, and also, I think, um, they've accepted, they're gonna.
He has the Palace Hospital and the school around with.
Let's go, let's do it, let's do it. Send the machine back to them.
Yes, that's where the two are.
But I think the most has to be provided.
Did she just say he has the school too?
WA.
Washington Palace. Some schools around us, but he's contacted Lubeck School, he did contact, um.
Well, we need to find out about that, follow up on it, because.
Yeah, that's only. Can we have a copy of that, because we were told there was only one vendor, Suzette, set price, and the town seems to be getting better prices than we're offered, which is, uh, not right.
No, we, they were contacting.
That's not true. You definitely want to jump, they jump on this with the.
Yeah, yeah, and I've been saying that, especially, we've been bringing up copies several times.
And I told them about all the places where.
If you guys get a deal, please share it with us.
I make a motion to go with, uh, with Bangor.
Subject to the fact that Suzette needs to double check on the return of the one that we have here. They've agreed to pay for the cost, or they said we might have to store it till the end of the lease, they just agree.
This guy, this guy promises to ship it for us.
Oh, they'll ship it. Just make sure that all of those P's and Q's are checked by Suzette.
So we don't go without, for a day.
I, I just was hoping we would authorize them to make that decision, and we like these people, as lo, as long as she checks on the cutting of the contract and all.
And I will tell you, my wife worked at WA, she said that they were phenomenal.
This company?
Mr. Burns was phenomenal.
Oh, good, wow, that's a great selling point, technician in Lubeck.
Good.
Yeah.
Well, I told John, because he, he approached me about it here a few days ago, and I said, this is, you have a vested interest in this, you're a Lubeck taxpayer, so the more you save us, the more you're saving your own profit.
Second, go to second to that motion?
We've done it, I'll second that.
All in favor? So, it just.
Motion to accept best contract proposal?
We must go with the one, we want to go, it's provided it's less than what we're paying now.
It is.
And it is, and so.
And they can, uh, provide uninterrupted coverage.
And you, so that needs to be signed?
Oh, that's proposed, right.
Okay, so.
To accept Bangor computer.
Computer copy provided, it saves us money, they pay for the, uh, the breaking of our contract we're in now, and then they pay, pay to return them.
Motion by Joanne, seconded?
But all of that has to be in there.
Vote. Vote, all in favor?
All in favor.
Okay, another update on, um, just a quick one on Rogers Island, let you know that I'm still working on it, I emailed John Southern, Southern of Down East Coast Conservancy. He was asking permission to go with Dennis Maher, to take care of the trust and easement work, and, you know, he tried to beat Talbert, but he never got back to him, so I said just go ahead with, with this other guy. And so, that's just it.
Yep.
Oiski. It's been, the harbor board is changing, having the key changed out and new keys, there's been problems, Guffels was doing it. So right now, we're kind of holding on changing the key through the scallop season coming up, and the fishermen are changing the rigging, and, um, we've got thirty keys over at Guffels that were made, it wasn't the right key, it's still work on what we have, but they're giving us those keys to get us by, because right now we don't have any, so.
We don't have any more to combat.
Right, because they're not returning them anymore, the fishermen get the keepers for the.
It's already signed, you know, they're paying them more, and then they, it comes from more, if you request one, it's twenty-five dollars.
Just letting the public know that, that we are getting more. And that's all, that's all.
Well, Stephanie, public comment?
Two quick, real quick things, uh, you said that it's gonna be possibly Facebook Live?
Yeah.
And that, can it be for the school board also?
People really do like the live school board, just sort of getting into it.
Can you use the town? Uh, we, I don't mind if you use the town website, the town Facebook town.
So a message could be put on the Lubeck, um, school Facebook saying that it will be broadcast through the town Facebook site? Because people, we're, we're getting a lot of really good comments, they really like the idea, because they want, they can't make it to the meeting, but they really are interested.
I don't know what else to do.
Oh, okay, alright, and then also, um, when he was talking, um, when Jim was talking about how we have a hundred and seventy million dollars worth of acreage here, of, of land space. Now, and, um, the money goes out the tax rolls, and other people have to pick up that tax, and that also applies to the state, uh, for education, um, credit, because they're, they're facing it on a hundred and seventy million dollars worth of land value, and they're saying, hey, you're gonna be getting all this taxes, when really, twenty-five percent of it we don't get. So then they only give us a portion of what we should be getting if we got full tax value, so again, the taxpayers have to make up that difference, not just the mill rate on the property tax, you're getting nicked from the butt for the school too.
Hit twice.
Yeah, exactly, and I was gonna say that, because.
Yeah, this is exciting.
It is, it is, I agree, a hundred percent of the land. Yeah, they, you, you can't do that, you're taxing people out of the long-term residents.
They need to pay the overheads.
Absolutely, and there are states that have done that, that are in the same situation, because Minnesota just did that, nobody gets a tax break, you wanna make the conservation line that's break, that's fine, but you're not gonna get the tax break, because you've hurt two beautiful people already. And it's been a big thing that was hard fought. We'll see if it happens here, it'll be nice.
So the harbor board, the next one is December seventeenth, we didn't have, um, anyone at the nineteenth at all, in summary, rocking harbor board, harbor master, but we're hoping to get, I guess everyone's getting ready for.
Yeah.
Fishing.
Sometimes those birds need to be calmed.
Well, she, Renee puts it on that, the board, the Facebook, that is perfect, the calendar, that's the one.
I think if it wasn't on the calendar, that might have been part of it, by, by error. So that's the seventeenth of December, shellfish is the third, uh, of December at six, and the harbor board's at six as well, and Joanne, do you have a meeting?
December tenth at five.
That's, that's our Christmas thing, but we do business before, we have. Recycling?
Uh, fourteen.
At when?
Fourteen.
And what else do we have? Do we have a time yet for the ad hoc school committee that we create?
It's Friday, November thirtieth at six. At six. And you have safe harbor twenty-nine.
Yeah, safe harbor's tomorrow night at five?
Yep. And you have the school board at six?
At six.
And, uh, all are welcome, and yeah, I always put it on dates, I put it on Lubeck Community Bulletin Board, which is why people see it, the, the same day, though.
Oh, I don't get that.
Okay, are we all set? I'm worried about Renee going home.
Um, I've got one thing, um, uh, Lubeck Friday coming, we're doing Santa and fruit baskets on Saturday, fruit baskets will be at nine, and Santa will be at noon time.
This Saturday?
Yes.
Thank you, David.
Good, baskets are gonna be this Saturday, at nine, for the elderly.
Yeah, and Santa will be at noon on the Friday, so, with the rain date of Sunday, at the same time.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you. Motion to adjourn?
I have to motion to adjourn.
Do I vote for safe, Renee?
I will, thank you.
I know, woo! Fifty? You are? I'm fifty years older than you are. Yes, I am. Oh, you get your, you get your badge, then I make it to sixty.